The Building and Ground Subcommittee meeting will come to order. Could you take a roll call, please, Deb?
Member Gaetley?
Present.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Capola?
Present.
Okay, on the agenda was a request for use of school administration building lot. And something has come up so that we have to revisit that. So I'm looking for a motion to table.
Make a motion to table.
What was that? Sorry.
Something came up and we need to revisit this issue at another time. So I was looking for a motion to table. I'll explain.
Maybe you want to explain, I don't know, to Brian?
Yeah, please.
Okay, so apparently that we want to allow the LEAP Education Dream More program van to be parked in our school lots. However, there is no said vans as of yet.
Can I?
Yes.
So they don't own the vans yet. So it does not make sense to approve the parking until we know they have secured vans.
So why would it be?
All we're saying is, all the recommendation is, is just to table this for a future date.
We'll revisit it.
Can I ask why it's on the agenda then? Why is it right now, like, was there a specific?
Because it was understood by us that they already have the vans. And we found out today, they do not have the vans.
Okay, and they have to secure, okay, so that's the, so when they do secure the vans, there'll be?
Bring it back.
Okay. A second. The table.
Thank you. I should have called you, sorry. Motion to adjourn?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
For citizens to express their views on matters of concern in the school committee, the sessions are not designed to encourage debate or lengthy exchange of views but are to have the committee understand numerous points of view. The committee would appreciate keeping, speakers keeping their presentation to three minutes in order to accommodate as many people as time permits. The chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on the same topic to three. All speakers must be at least 18 years of age or enrolled in high school in the public school district and have discussed their views with a student government representative. The chair reserves the right to rule the speaker out of order if he or she feels that the speaker's comments are personal in nature. If a speaker's comments are directed at a school community member or a member of school administration in attendance, that member through the chair may address the individual. The sessions will promptly commence 15 minutes prior to the start of the regular school committee meeting. Is anyone here to speak at open mic? Anyone wishing to speak at open mic? Anyone for open mic? We are now closing open mic. Thank you. The school committee, roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Capola?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gaetley?
Present.
Member Magnolia?
Absent.
Member Peña?
Present.
Mayor Nicholson?
Present. Please rise for a salute to the flag followed by a moment of silence.
I am the leader of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence in memory of Patricia Pike, retired teacher who passed away October 11th, 2022. Thank you. First item on the agenda is the minutes.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting for policy subcommittee meeting on October 13th, 2022, and the 15th regular meeting on October 13th, 2022.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Absent.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Next item is a field trip request for classical students in the Pursuing Pathways Program to Washington DC. What's the recommendations?
I so recommend, but I'd like Shannon Gardner, Dr. Shannon Gardner, if she could, to come up and share a little bit about this trip. This is a request for an overnight field trip from March 27th through March 29th for the Lynn Classical students in the Pursuing Pathways Program in partnership with KIP and sponsored by the Boston Celtics. This will be a valuable experience supporting students' college and career exploration. And I'm going to stop there and let you finish with how many are going, what they'll do, what the plan is.
Sure, there's 13 students in the program, so 13 students are eligible to go as long as they, their parents give them permission and everything is fine. And so on the field trip, we're going to take a train down to Washington DC and go to a Celtics game and then go to Howard University, tour the Capitol monuments, and visit a museum. And so it's going to be a two-day trip and we'll be traveling by train. There'll be three LPS chaperones, three KIP chaperones, so we should be very well covered on the trip.
And the cost of the trip is totally being covered by the Boston Celtics.
Great.
Brian?
Oh, sorry. Do your job, sorry.
Member Castellanos?
Any school committee member as well. You guys are well-staffed, if you're looking for a chaperone.
Well, of course, we know who would go there.
Go Celtics, for the kids.
The one that's a teacher experience.
This isn't a debate.
Thank you, Dr. Gardner. Thank you. What's the will of the committee?
Make a motion to allow the field trip request for the classical students in the Pursuing Pathways Program to Washington DC, March 27th, 2023 to March 29th, 2023. Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Absent.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Very much.
Next item is ESER III update and projected spending timeline.
So what you have in front of you are the expenditures that we have already done as well as what we're expecting to do in the remainder of this year and into next year. As you can see, there is a balance of zero. We are working very hard to use this money in a way that is impactful for the long haul. Loss of learning opportunities for our students. Some expenditures that will be like a one-time cost that will benefit from what we're purchasing going forward. We're looking at some HVAC elements for summer school to, most likely, we are targeting the summer schools, the special ed summer schools that consistently run every summer so that we won't have to cancel summer school due to heat. Mike Donovan is working towards finding, you know, the cost of what that could be, what, what the best alternative is, and then we will fund that so that we have something in place so that we don't have to cancel summer school when special ed, the programmings are running in the summer. We also, we're continuing our summer school. We did it last year, we're doing it this year, we'll do it the year after. We're going to offer after-school opportunities. Schools will be asked to submit proposals. We will then look at those proposals, potentially may need to make adjustments so that we're staying within a budget that will sustain, you know, that will support it. But everyone will have the opportunity to have some kind of after-school programming. It's not that we would say no to it, it's just we might have to make some minor adjustments to it so that it's equitable across the district. We sent out a survey to all the schools, asking them, telling them what the buckets, the buckets that the grant allows us to spend money on. And you see those four buckets are learning loss, academics, social-emotional learning, and any operations in capital. But the operations in capital have to be able to link back to impacts of COVID. So, so the modulars that are on here link to trying to spread out to alleviate and mitigate any transmission of any illnesses that, you know, are contagious. The survey results, there was common trends in what schools were asking for. They all were asking for before and after-school support for students. Many of them were asking for materials, flexible seating, furniture, supplies like the vocational equipment, tech, put some things in, science lab equipment, trying to update some of our things so that the learning is much more impactful. So we're looking at that. And many of them talked about family engagement workshops and opportunities to engage in with the families to help them. You'll see there also are some learning programs, LEAP for Education, that links back to the College and Career Success After-School Center that will, that links to the Dream More Program for Marshall and is expanding to Lynn English as a teen center. Jobs for Delaware is a position at Lynn Classical that we've actually had for a number of years, so we are looking to continue that. It's had great success. We actually, Molly and I just had a meeting with this organization and they were giving us quite accolades for that work that Classical is doing. So we're continuing that. And then Learn Launch is Elevating Student Voice and School Culture. That's at Marshall Middle School. They had that last year. If you have questions about that, Molly can answer some questions about that program, but we're continuing with that work that was very successful at Marshall. I think, oh, and then the social-emotional salaries. We have a number of our, not, well, some, not all, some of our social workers clinicians are being paid out of ESER right now, but we feel confident, Kevin and I have talked, we feel confident that with the Student Opportunity Act funding as it increases, that we'll be able to move that into appropriations. So it's just there to support now so that we could get more of them and then we'll be able to take it into appropriations. And that's pretty much it.
Member Capola and then Member Castellanos.
Okay. See, Jobs for, okay, it's different, different years, sorry. We have like $42 million, but in adding up, things that are like always on a top priority for parents are the after-school, the extra support, and things like that, only come to about three and a half million out of the 42. I'm concerned that we're not, we're doing it, but maybe not enough.
So one-
Enough money into that-
Yeah.
Of the 42 million.
One of the challenges with after-school support and the summer school support is having staffing that are able to do it. I will say, Member Capola, that when the proposals come in, if the, if the proposals are really of value, which many times they are, we're not going to say no to them. There might be some minor adjustments, but we will, we will provide, we'll, we'll slide money from other places, like, you know, materials, we'll take less for materials and furniture and, and the loss of learning is a priority for us as well.
Yep, I think for us at the table also, so.
Yeah, I agree.
The other thing is on the early childhood, it says modular classrooms. Where, where would that be?
Right now, we're looking at Connery, Ingalls, and then the third one, where we were talking here in this, in this lot, but where Callahan was also a thought so that it had a school. But we also know that Callahan Breed and Classical area has a lot of students and that is a concern with the traffic and all of that. So that third one, we're still in conversations around it, but as of right now, we were saying here.
Okay, and the other thing is, I don't hear mention the Tracy or the Ford. Their kindergarteners aren't in their building. So how, how with this money can we make that happen? Because that, that's really difficult.
They don't have the space in their lots to put a modular. If they did, that would have been the first place, I think we would have done.
Ford has one modular.
Right.
Right? There's no space to do-
To put a second.
-what we're talking about there. We'd love to do it there.
Because it's very difficult-
Same with Tracy.
-to have kindergarteners. I mean, the first, first day that they went on the bus to the Ingalls School was a bit chaotic and didn't go well for those little kids. The other question is on training for translation certification, and that's, how many are we looking to certify in that?
So if you recall on a presentation I did, there was a section that actually showed you, it was actually the, was it the additional appropriations present? It was one of the, I'll have to look at which presentation, but a presentation that I, I did for you. There was a section specifically around the translation piece, and we have, it was decent numbers, like, we're, we've already trained, I think over the past few years, it's been, I think it's like eight to 11. And we have a group that's doing it now with plans to expand that into next semester and into the summer. So we're doing as many as we can get in and as many as are willing to participate in the training.
Thank you.
I can give you exact numbers, I'll pull that presentation out, I just don't have it in front of me.
I remember the presentation, I was just wondering where we were on how many we-
Because that, that presentation had the exact data of numbers and what years.
Great.
Member Castellanos and Member Gaetley?
I have two questions. My first question is for the HVAC projects. Where have we identified those projects, which?
So Shoemaker has a program every year for the coach program. Callahan has a program, they, they do the task program and then the project continue. So that school will be targeted. And then potentially a third, it depends on, like, I'm thinking Hood, we've expanded the coach program into Hood Elementary, but I don't know, at this point, I don't know if those students will go to Shoemaker and be part of that program, or if there will be a second program. So there is thoughts that either a third school or that we could potentially do some portable scenarios for some of the other schools for when they have summer, just summer program for individual classes that they're using. But Mike Donovan is looking into what is, what are the types of air conditioning units and what the cost would be. So we're still in the planning stages of that. But definitely Shoemaker, definitely Callahan.
And it, does it look like we're going to clear that 7 million? That's, that's kind of where I feel like, is, is that going to be?
That's also part of the big HVAC-
Yeah.
-program they did. So that's the remainder, there was two phases, they're working on it, pretty much completing that now. So that cost has already been, you know, a lot of that money will be completed.
And my second question is around the modular classrooms. How many students holds, per modular, so one modular holds how many students?
Well, so it depends on how many classrooms per modular, right? We're looking for six per modular. And then if you figure each class, you know, 20 to 25 students, times six, you're talking a good amount of kids.
Okay, and that's going to be the-
Evan, the math.
Well, that's, well, my question, so the modulars are going to be, right, is it the parking lot in English? The, I do, I-
So the three that are in motion, Lynn English already has a modular and they're adding classrooms to that. So that'll go to, I think, a 12-room modular, because it currently has six and they're adding six on each, you know, three on each end. Classical's is a six, that's planning to go into the small lot that's by the gym entrance. And then Hood is getting a four, right next to the current one that they have. The other three, for Ingalls, Connery, and either Bennett Street or Callahan, wherever it ends up landing, are planned to be six modulars.
What's the timeline on those?
The three that are in motion are ready. The, Mike Donovan shared that they should, they potentially could be ready for late spring, but most likely ready for, you know, next, to use next year. The, the other three, if we can get these in motion, and we were with him today, he said if we can get these in motion, like ASAP, the same thing, they could potentially be ready for September.
Thank you. Nice, that's good. Member Gaetley?
Yes, so I was wondering, have you looked at where you're going to put the Connery and the Ingalls modular?
Yeah, the Ingalls modular, they're, they're assessing the modular, they're assessing the modular that's currently there. It's, it's very, very old, but was recently renovated. And so it would go right where that modular is, in the very backside parking lot.
Okay. And how about Connery?
Connery would go out in the back schoolyard, I believe.
So are we taking up a lot of the space for the kids to?
These are two schools who have hu- huge-
Good-sized schoolyards.
Okay.
And the, this, the schoolyard piece where I, actually, let me say, at Connery, I think both at Connery and at, I know at Ingalls, it's in the parking lot space where there's parking, not where there's a playground. I believe they will make that decision at Connery as well, which would be on the side parking lot where the parking is, where staff park.
Okay, and Deb, is it going to be possible, last year we discussed with Dr. Tuttweiler the possibility of having like a ninth-grade academy at the Fecto Larry School because of overcrowded, crowded class sizes at Classical and English and a very small amount at Fecto Larry. I think we have to work that out. I think we have to think outside of the box because class sizes are really important for everyone.
Yeah, so we did talk to Mike about Fecto, about the auditorium and making that into classroom space, and also looking at available classroom space. The problem is the cost of that. The, the auditorium is condemned, cannot be used, and there certainly is asbestos and all of that. And so I just don't know if financially we would be able to do it. Doesn't mean it's out of the question, but it just, in the conversations we've had, it, it looks difficult to do.
Okay, because it was him that mentioned it to me, so I really thought that-
I think we are, we are all trying to think of as many possible opportunities to use space. We, today we went to Briar Cliff Lodge to take a look at that space. That looks promising.
That should be promising.
That that's not, you know, that's not for this year. If, if we're able to access it, it will be into next year, so.
And there's, and the other question is on after-school programs. The LEAP, is that Marshall and Lynn English High School?
LEAP for Learning, yeah. Marshall has the Dream More program, it's called, it's run by LEAP for Learning. The new expansion is for Lynn English. It will be a teen center. It's projected to begin in January. It will have opportunities for the high school students to stay at school after school on, I believe even on Saturdays if I'm correct. And then in the summer, there's opportunities for the high schoolers to go to the school and spend time there. It's a heavy linkage to college and career understanding. And then there's an internship component to the summer piece to it. So it's, it sounds like it's going to be a great program once it gets up and running.
And we have a Learn Launch, Launch, the PD for Elevating Students Voices and Culture, that's also at Marshall?
That was, yeah, that was a program that Marshall had last year and are, we're continuing this year.
And they're very successful, but Mike, what I'm wondering is, what about Breed, what about Pickering, what about Lynn Classical? What are we doing for those schools?
Yeah, I mean, we, we're going to, we ask for proposals from schools all the time, you know, for things that they'd like to propose us to consider. Learn Launch is, is looking to expand. They were looking to do Breed. We certainly can look at possibly adding that, but the cost of it required an RFP process, and that's how Marshall got it. So we would have to go through that process again if we were to expand to Breed.
Okay, maybe we should encourage people from Breed and Pickering and Classical.
Yeah, I will say that Marshall historically pursues opportunities for their school and then, you know, gets external funding for it to get it started. And then, you know, in order to continue it, we then have to evaluate, do we have the funding? We, you know, put out the RFP, all of that. We just haven't had that happen at the other schools. That doesn't mean that we would not consider expanding.
And we just need equity across the board.
Absolutely, I agree. I agree.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yeah, Member Capola?
Just wondering, you talked about putting them in the parking lots where the teachers park. How, how much parking is at Connery and Ingalls? I mean, is that going to force the cars out into the street? And I know-
No.
-at Connery, there was just no room out in those streets, nor at Ingalls.
It won't force the parking out to the street.
There's enough space.
There's enough space, okay, yeah.
Member Castellanos?
I'd just be mindful, I know during snow removals, and I know Connery's a very popular, popular lot, that's something too that we probably have to kind of put in the, in the planning, because when we do have snowstorms, a lot of people do park in Connery and some of those other lots, so.
We've already started.
Yeah, so, you know, we, we, we do, we do snow coordination meetings and we've been meeting since the winter and most recently this week or late last week, and this was one of the topics, the parking availability, and we'll, we'll continue to talk to the, the school department as we sort of lead up to that, the news there. And thanks to the support of the school committee and the councils that the Tracy house is all lined up to come down, and that's going to be hopefully available this winter, at least as a gravel lot.
We also talked a little bit about looking at the schools that are not on the list for parking and considering opening those up.
And, and that'll be a conversation, you're aware, that's a process, if that need presents itself, so. Member Dugan?
Yeah, think, could you explain a little bit of the Jobs for Delaware? I apologize if, if you had done that already, but what that's all about and what that position entails.
So it's one teacher at Classical. It's an elective that students can take. It is linked to, you know, college and career discussions, support, and the, from what the gentleman, the president of Jobs for Delaware said to us, our data shows that our, many of our students that go through that class go on to colleges and careers and continue their future, and that they have data to show that. They are looking for us to expand. They are looking to celebrate our work. Lynn English used to have a position, but for some reason, over the years, it was before I came to this level, that the position stopped. But Classical has consistently kept it and it has been very successful.
Is there a way we could get it back at English, or is there something we could do?
Absolutely, I mean, that was one of the conversations we had, was expanding it back to English.
Yeah, yeah.
But also expanding, looking at expanding into middle school. In, you know, I, I think with even the early college courses and recruitment into those courses, our middle schoolers need to have a stronger understanding of the impact of that and how you prepare yourself to be able to take those courses. And so we've been invited to go to Delaware to see their model. They have a middle school model and the high school model is more expensive. their model. They have a middle school model and the high school model is more expanded than ours. So they did invite us to, to go and see it. So we're considering doing that so we can see what it looks like.
Awesome. Thank you.
Member Capola?
Just on that same topic, the Jobs for Delaware. You said there's one teacher and I know the teacher isn't making 0.8 million. So what is, is the cost? Are we paying?
So, so you want to explain what the zero, point zero eight, it stands for 80,000.
Yeah.
Point zero eight is 80,000.
Oh, okay. See, 80,000 for the teacher. Okay. So what did they, I mean, where do we pay-
And it's really not 80,000. It's like 70.
It's close to that.
Yeah, it's close to 80,000.
What do we pay that? Do we pay them anything?
We pay the company. They pay the instructor.
Right.
It's not-
Oh, it's the, the salary for the year is basically what it is.
So it's not one of our employees then?
No.
No. Okay.
It's part of that organization.
Oh, I see. Okay. How many classes do they do?
Uh, the same as any other elective. So it's, what is it, four classes a day?
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. They're a full-time employee at the school.
Member Peña?
Yes, I had a question. The Leap for Education, you know, the College and Career After School Center, is that offered in bilingual? Is that for, you know, also for ELs and bilingual?
Oh, they target Ls. Do you want to talk a little bit about?
Well, sure. So that's a major focus area is offering more opportunities for families from not, English is not their first language. So they, that's the whole recruitment process, but then they obviously incorporate all other aspects to it too.
Yeah.
But it's to get them onto the track of filling in the background knowledge that they would need in terms of like college and career readiness pathways.
And it's also linked with like family engagement, parent engagement?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Thank you.
Member Castellanos?
Just want to add, so the Dream More Program, I think we, we had to, we had the opportunity to tour them this summer. And I think that's been one of, one of my most favorite experiences during a tour is to see the students and just the whole ecosystem of what they're trying to do. And I think the segue into the, the high school was really inspired by the, the staff, the students, the families who were actually engaging in the program at the Dream More. It was pretty inspiring. I, I really, to this day, that was probably one of my most favorite experiences to tour a program. And to see the, the passion come, like just, just coming from staff has just been something that I've, I've noticed. And I just, I, I give, I think Linda Cyrus has worked very hard, the executive director from Leap for Education, to, to ensure that, you know, we're really pursuing equity, especially in that population. So it's just, I think, I want to say thank you, because I think there's been a whole lot of collaborating happening. And it's, this program came during the pandemic. So a lot of the, the organization really came during a time where we really needed some sustainability in, in our after school program and, and people who were really invested in our students. So.
Member Gailey?
I also went to the summer program with you and I, I found it to be very rewarding to watch the students from our city and being able to explain what they were doing. And I was really impressed and I, that's why I would like to see it at Breed. I would like to see it at Pickering. I would like to see these programs open up so there is equity across the board. I don't know how we're going to get people to write out those forms and to get it into our district, but that, that is what I would like to see. So it's across the board. It is equal. Everybody gets a chance at it. So that was just my thoughts on it. And thank you, because I enjoyed going, even though it wasn't one of my better days.
Does this need a vote for the?
No. No, it's just to let, yeah, just to inform.
All right.
Muchas gracias. Gracias.
Excellent. Thank you, everyone. Ratification of any votes that will move forward in the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee?
There weren't any votes taken at this time. It was tabled.
Member Gailey? Should we take a motion to move the agenda out of order to move the executive session to the last item?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Superintendent?
Yes. So you have a packet with my superintendent report. The quote for this report, "You cannot solve a problem until you acknowledge that you have one and accept the responsibility for solving it." It's a quote by Zig Ziglar. "At our last meeting, a letter was read during open mic sharing the frustration around the opening of school and the many new aspects of this opening that have been very challenging. As Zig Ziglar's quote says, 'We can't solve a problem until we acknowledge them.' Attached, you will see a copy of the email that I sent to all staff acknowledging the problems, clarifying points that were made, and providing an opportunity for staff to give feedback so that we can respond appropriately. Some of the problems that were cited were out of our control, but I assure you that many staff at all levels have been working diligently to move us forward in resolving the pieces that are still an issue.'" Finally, DESE has released all of the assessment data from the 2021-22 school year. Families should have already received MCAS and access results. When we meet on November 10th, we as a team will report on our analysis of that data. In advance of that meeting, I want to forewarn that the data presentation will look different in many ways. It is no secret that statewide, the outcomes for, for all students were notably different than in previous years. Also, DESE continues to discourage comparison, community to community. This is due to the lived experience being incredibly different between communities. As a result, comparing outcomes would be inappropriate. In total, the assessment outcomes serve as data points for us to use in determining areas of emphasis in content and skills and which strategies will best serve the students. It should also be noted that this is the first release of accountability information since 2019. This year's information includes data on all accountability indicators and school percentiles. It does not, however, include targets for these indicators or measures of progress towards targets. The 2022 data will be considered as the new baseline moving forward. Target setting will resume in 2023 and we will provide a more detailed presentation at our next meeting.
All right. So we have a request for executive session?
Make a motion to request for executive session-
Set.
-to approve the executive session minutes for September 29, 2022. A request for executive session for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Lynn Community Enrichment Program, and a request for executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, A3, to discuss strategy with respect to pending litigation, Noyes versus Lynn Public Schools.
So seconds. Roll call please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia, absent. Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia, absent. Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
We had one item that we voted on in regular session that we are prepared to vote, that we voted on in executive session, that to vote on in a regular session, which is a increase to the Community Enrichment Program to $35,000 a year.
So moved.
Second. Roll call please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia, absent. Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
So no further business?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned. Thank you.